Now, we're going to move on to a study session. We're going to receive an update on COVID-19 response efforts and preliminary financial impacts. And I believe on that, we will be switching to Javon and/or Keith DiMartini. So, city manager and finance director, please go ahead.
Good afternoon to the mayor and the city council, Javon Grogan, the city manager. I'm here in the council chamber, and I'll be joined by Keith DiMartini, who will assist me in this presentation. And we also have Roseanne Faust, who is the president and CEO of SAMCITA, the Samatay County Economic Development Association. And so, at a point in this presentation, I will turn over the screen to her, and she will provide the city council and the public with a presentation. And so, right now, I will share our screen. Work on the technology. And one second, we'll get it up full screen for you. Down. All right, we should be good to go. Okay, so, the objective, so, the objective is to give the public in the community an update on not only COVID-19, but on the implications that COVID-19 is having on the city's budget. I think we all know, as we watch local and regional news, that we're dealing with two issues, the very significant public health crisis and the economic downturn that we are in, that is having effects globally, nationally, and certainly here on our city. And so, in this presentation, we will provide the city council and the public with an overview of what the revenue projection looks like for both this fiscal year and some of the challenges that we have ahead of us for next fiscal year. And so, why don't we launch into the presentation? And so, for our agenda, we'll give an overview of COVID-19. We'll talk about some of the steps taken to limit the exposure. We'll talk about economic trends. We will talk about the current budget. For those at home that aren't used to government speak, we'll talk a lot about fiscal year 1920. That is our current budget year, which goes from July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020. And the next fiscal year that we are in the process of developing, that will go before the city council in May and in June, and will take effect for July 1 of 2020 and run through June 30 of 2021. We'll talk about next steps, because this tonight is a presentation of the analysis, and then the next steps will be strategies to address. So, why don't we begin with our update of COVID-19? So, in our county, Samatay County, we know that, as of today, there are 721 confirmed COVID-19 cases, and unfortunately, there have been 21 deaths. The best resource for the community, as we have pushed out on various platforms, is on health information, is the Samatay County Health Officer's website. That is up on the screen. It is smchealth.org/coronavirus. And we'll be showing you images from that page in a little bit. And so, as we all know, that we have a shelter-in-place order that began on, took effect on March 17. It is currently in effect through May 3. That has not been extended, but may be extended, and we are waiting on the health officer for additional guidance. I think we all know that schools have not been canceled for this school year, but all in-school sessions have been canceled. And on Monday, it was announced that that applies to all private and parochial schools as well. And essential businesses, as we all know, are open with social distancing protocols. So, a couple stacks. So, this page is a screenshot from the county, and we'll go really quickly through some of the details on subsequent pages. But cases per day, as we've talked a lot about, all of these strategies are about lowering the curve, and this data shows clearly a bell curve. And what it clearly shows is that it appears to be moderating, and we appear to be approaching the peak. There is no confirmation that we're at the peak now, but you see that bell curve is starting to have a nice bell curve shape to it. And we always knew that everything we're doing is not to stop the virus. It is to slow its impact on our community. And we want to reduce the number of infections by social distancing and also allow our hospitals with the capacity to address those that are sick. New cases by day is another way to see the information. And what you can see is that, as we have continued our social distancing, which began, as I mentioned, on March 17, there was a spike in the number of daily cases. But over the last few weeks, there's been a decrease in the number of daily cases, a significant decrease from what we saw at the end of March and the beginning of April. And so, we should all be proud of that. We should all be proud of all the social distancing that not just our community, but everywhere else in the county has employed. A little bit more detail on the total cases. So, as we all know, there is no age range that is not hit by COVID-19. And we see that certainly in our county data, which is the chart that is before you on the left-hand side, where you can see that the age range for those positive cases goes from zero to above 90, with the largest single group of positive cases in the 31 to 50 range. And, you know, fairly equally split between female and male, 390 female and 331 male. However, the story is different when we look at deaths. We know that unfortunate deaths from COVID-19 more affect our 51 to older population. That's been reported nationally, and we certainly see that trend within our local county. There has been no one under 50 that has died within our county from COVID-19. But it is those in our older population that we are most concerned about. And that's why we all have to employ social distancing, because we may be carriers, and we may be infecting someone else in our community and may not know. And I just wanted to provide this statistic and representation. And this is all public data, and again, available on the county website. Next is a little bit of a good news, good news story, which is our hospital capacity. We've been seeing nationally the ability to acquire ventilators and beds. And so, this county has done an amazing job, and I think we should all be proud of that. And so, this is a page on their website, and I want to provide a little bit more detail. So, what's before you on this slide is a representation of beds, available hospital beds and ventilators. So, in our county, right now, we have about 100 beds in use related to COVID-19. But we have more available beds than we have in use. And so, we know that we appear to, one, have flattened our curve, but we also appear to have enough hospital beds available for when we hit the surge. And the same thing is true in ventilators. We have enough ventilators available, about a little bit over 50 in use, but another 160 to 167 over the last few days available to be used. And so, that's good news of where our county sits. And so, that's most important for our residents at home that may be watching national news, in particular in New York, and may be fearing if they get sick, will the hospital system be able to accommodate them? Locally, we have the available beds and ventilators. And this is on lab testing. The only reason why there's a lot of data here, but I'm just highlighting positivity, because out of the total tests that have been done in our county, over 600, 6,700 tests, the positive rate is about 10%. That shouldn't alarm people, because most of the time, people that get the test have symptoms of being sick. And so, it's not surprising that the positivity rate is higher than the 3% that we expect of the population that may get COVID-19. But of those that have been tested in our county, the positivity rate is 10%. And so, as I think everybody knows, there's a wonderful collaboration going on between our city, the county, the county health department, and the CDC. The elected officials countywide are briefed three times a week. And then, there's a city manager briefing with all the city managers in the county three times a week. There's testing available to the public at the Samatay County Event Center through the Verily website, verily.com. If you are having symptoms, the best recommendation is to go see your physician, to be prioritized, or go to the verily.com site. And members in our community may have also seen the testing site that Dignity Health set up in Town Center. There are a number of temporary housing sites. One of the things that the county set up, knowing that people will need to be quarantined, but will not be able to be quarantined in their home, potentially not wanting to infect other members of their home. There is a quarantine site at the Samatay County Event Center. And going through your health provider, should you have to quarantine, you can get access to that. As we all know, that there is a county-wide moratorium on residential evictions, and there is additional homeless services and resources out there for a number of the people in our community that are experiencing homelessness. And we are all adhering to the shelter-in-place. And I just want to thank everybody in the community for doing that. And our PIL team is doing an amazing job, and we'll show a little bit about that. Homelessness, homelessness, homelessness. I say that three times, because we're getting a number of members of the community that are experiencing increased conditions with homelessness in our city. And so, I want to pause for a minute to talk a little bit about that. Assisting individuals experiencing homelessness during this time is even more important. And I think all of our collective resolve to help out people that are homeless has been heightened by this public health crisis that we're dealing with. I think one of the hard truths is that people that are experiencing homelessness do not always accept shelter when it is provided. And we had a public comment at this meeting asking, has the homeless encampments in our city been approached and offered services? The answer to that is absolutely. Our homeless coordinator, outreach coordinator, Life Moves continues to serve, as well as our staff that go out and interface with our homeless population. They have been offered services. Those services are not always accepted. The reasons are many for why they may not be accepted. And I think one of the sad things is COVID-19 didn't change that. And in some respects, it may have even made it worse for some individuals that were resistant to services to continue to be resistant to services. And we've all have heard about the increased shelter beds and hotel room beds, but they're not always taken advantage of. And one of the reasons why the order was titled Shelter-In Place and not Shelter-at-Home was a reflection of not everyone has a home. And then, the city is aware, however, that there are parts of the community facing additional impacts from homelessness. This is largely because the CDC, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, as well as the county, have asked cities not to move homeless encampments. And they've done that in the interest of public health. The CDC has actually published interim guidelines, asking communities not to remove homeless encampments, but instead, keep them in place. Due to the removal will likely create two things. One, it creates a larger interface of people that need to support that removal. It also disperses a person's residence and potentially spreads the virus to other parts of our community. One of the things I want to say from the city is, while we are not moving homeless encampments unless there is a significant criminal reason or significant risk to public health, we recognize that during this time where our homeless population is sheltering in place, we have to continue to remove some of the accumulated debris. And we have stepped up our efforts in that fashion and have approached homeless encampments to do just that and have them separate trash from belongings. It is a difficult process, but it is a process that our employees are committed to. And we will continue to address the quality of life implications of homelessness as we're in the middle of this shelter-in-place order. SMC Strong. We've talked about that. That has been pushed out a lot on social media. Just wanted to remind the community of that. There has been significant donations to SMC Strong. And the point is to help individuals and families and small businesses and nonprofits that are most impacted by this shelter-in-place order. And so, I think we all know that the county has contributed over $3 million to the effort. YouTube has contributed $50 million, I'm sorry, $50,000 to the effort, not 50 million. And a number of other organizations have contributed to that effort. There are a number of activities that are not occurring, as we all know. Just have one of the graphics up to remind the public. No use of our sports courts, no use of our picnic areas. Most construction outside of that that is related to a essential business can be allowed with some minor exceptions. Most group sports have been canceled. Of course, sideshows cannot occur, and the use of our dog parks have been suspended. And at this point, all of our board and commission meetings, since we have been in a shelter-in-place ordinance, have been suspended. We will look to bring those back with appropriate virtual platforms, such as this, beginning in the month of May. CityNet Services. So, as the community, we wanted to remind the community that at the very last council meeting, we had a special meeting where the council approved funding for a collaborative effort to use our very own CityNet Internet services and provide internet to kids in need. So, kids in pre-K to 12. We're estimating approximately 120 families can be served with our home internet. And the plan is, there have been enough donations to provide that free for one year. And so, that program has kicked off. We've served a number of families already, and just wanted to celebrate that a little bit. We put out a flyer in English and Spanish, and it's a collaborative effort to fund that between a number of entities, the school districts, the San Bruno Community Foundation, the San Bruno Education Foundation, also funded by YouTube, the Police Association, the Lions, and the Rotary Club. We will continue to leverage our social media and all of those various platforms to reach the public. I just want to congratulate our PIL team for doing an amazing job with their graphics and informing the community. We've had lots of positive feedback, and would like that to, and will continue that. Storytime. And with the new regulations, or with the new advisory notice that face coverings be worn, we put that out as well, and that is that blue graphic on the left. We've also want to remind the public that the Channel 1 for our own San Bruno cable has really been turned into a COVID-19 educational platform. And so, if you tune into that for about 15 minutes, you'll get a lot of resources that you'll need, and you'll hear a number of public service announcements from your city of San Bruno. And we've done that. We've used social media, our website. The city tilted up a website. It's our web address/coronavirus. We are also preparing a citywide mailer, actually, two. One, they were stuffing today to go out to our senior community that will have a number of resources and mind games in addition to ways for the seniors to contact. And we are continuing to provide our senior lunch program only in delivery, and the number is going up, which is good news. And we are also planning a citywide mailer, because we will not be issuing an activity guide due to the cancellation of most, or nearly all of our recreation programs. We are transitioning that document into a citywide mailer, knowing that there is a population that we are not reaching on our social media platforms. Channel 1, and then, we have a number of public service announcements. Since this 2020, just a reminder, the mayor did an excellent job at that, so I won't talk about that. And that concludes my COVID-19 update. I really want to turn it over now to Roseanne Faust from SAMCITA, who will provide the city council with a presentation on everything SAMCITA is doing to support our business community. So, Roseanne, I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and you have the con.
And, Roseanne, as they're switching over to your segue, I wanted to thank you very much, you and your team, for the work that you've been doing with SAMCITA. We get to be on these county calls where you offer and have, from the very beginning, that this happened when the county came and asked you and your team, and you really have been reaching out and very much providing information and resources and where people can get assistance, or at least find the direction and where to go. So, thank you very much, and thank you for spending your time to be here with us this evening.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Medina, and thank you, members of the council, to city manager Grogan and your city team. It's really been so great to get to know our communities in Samatay County on a deeper level. And I really appreciate the collaboration. I appreciate the collaboration with the San Bruno Chamber and the Bay Area Entrepreneurship Center through Skyline College. Saida Stroud has been a wonderful partner, and I just want to say thank you to the city. I'm going to quickly go through slides to show you a little bit of the work that we've been doing since early March, when the county tapped us to be the business community lead attached to the Emergency Operations Center. So, we took our SAMCITA.org website, which is usually talking about public policy, economic research, and just being a champion for the business community. And we pivoted very quickly to build one of the most extensive resources relating to COVID-19 that is out there. I want to assure the mayor and council and staff and community that all of the information we put up on SAMCITA.org has been vetted. If we can't tie it back to a credible source, it doesn't get included. So, we pivoted from doing general COVID information, having the links to the county, the health department, and we started to build the Business Continuity Action Plan and all the business and financial resources that are available today. And we just keep building on that. We also launched a Business Economic Impact Survey, which is still open, and we are going to keep it open as long as is needed. I'll show you numbers for the San Bruno community a little bit later in the slide. We also helped with the design, the development, and the launch of the Samatay County Strong Fund, mentioned by your city manager a few moments ago, including all the COVID-19-related PSAs, the fact that the site has multilingual messaging, targeted donation outreach we've been working on by utilizing all of our elected officials in the county, as well as other folks that want to help us raise money. Because the county put $3 million in from Measure K taxpayer dollars into the fund. The first $2 million has been deployed through the Silicon Valley Community Foundation for our core service agencies, for Samaritan House, Life Moves, Shelter Network, and other core service agencies that are really on the front line of helping our residents find the rental assistance, the food assistance, and all of the things really to get through this very challenging time. And we're going to continue to raise money, because the $1 million that's been set aside for small business assistance, if you think of a grant up to $10,000, that's 100 businesses across 21 different jurisdictions. We've also held multiple phone calls with city and town economic development folks. Your economic development team in San Bruno has just been really helpful and very appreciative of all the information. Chambers of Commerce, our Convention and Visitors Bureau. As you can imagine, the hospitality, especially from the convention and the corporate travel, has been heavily impacted. Trade associations, nonprofits, and others. So, if we move on to the next slide, thank you very much to your city clerk for helping move this presentation forward. So, the website is broken up into different sections, and we keep breaking it up, because there is just such a volume of information. So, on the right-hand side, you have all the current updates. Anything that we put on, on a daily basis, pops to the top of the blocks that you see on the right. So, any business and financial information, any of the city updates. We have our city and town links for our 21 different jurisdictions, so 20 cities and the county of Samatay. We have the health information. We have a plug to encourage people to do the census. We also have Zone Haven, which actually is the, it is a county platform that was designed for fire protection, that quickly pivoted and loaded in, from a geo-mapping perspective, all the restaurants that are doing takeout and delivery, the medical resources, the social services, so any of the essential businesses that are open. You can click on Zone Haven, and you can see what's available throughout the county. The jobs for hire, which I believe is very important to our community, considering that there are roughly close to 2.8 million unemployment claims filed in California in the last three weeks. So, the jobs for hire section is, again, resources that we have aggregated from NOVA, which is our workforce investment board for Samatay County, and Northern Santa Clara County, Onward California, which Governor Newsom had launched last week. So, all the jobs through Onward California, and they're matching people with jobs. So, there's a lot of information on there. And then, the links to our chambers and our educational resources, both through the County Office of Education, our school districts, as well as any free online resources that are available. We've had close to 30,000 views of our page since March 17, when the shelter-in-place first went into effect. So, if we move to the next slide, here is, so, the Business Economic Impact Survey is a simple 15-question survey. And it is designed to capture as much information on the economic impacts for our small business community. So, the city of San Bruno, we've received 24 responses. Again, we appreciate you pushing this out through all your different modes of communication methods. So, however you can do that. We've shared the information on the 24 businesses with the city manager and economic development team, because what we're seeing is communities are using this data to employ either city staff that might be pivoting to work on a new project related to what we're dealing with right now, or there might be volunteers in the community. The city of Samatay actually deployed city staff to reach out to the businesses, to answer questions. The city of Redwood City has used some of their library staff. We're going to be on a call later this week with the county to see how we can ramp that up countywide. Take some of their 1,700 folks that have volunteered through the county of Samatay. And we want to find out if there is a group of them that would be willing to participate in either a webinar to help people navigate all the different resources that are available. We have 211, which is the general system, but really, how do you fill out an application? Should you fill out for an SBA loan? Have you contacted your bank? Like, really to walk people through kind of the scary times that we're experiencing. So, moving on to the next slide. Thank you very much again to your city clerk. I really appreciate your help. Samatay County Strong Fund. City manager Grogan mentioned the, Samatay County Strong Fund is something that the county was very adamant on when Silicon Valley Community Foundation launched its fundraising efforts back in mid-March, and 10 counties were being supported. But we wanted our own Samatay County-focused. And so, if you look on the right of the slide, you have the Silicon Valley Community Foundation's, as of April 13, 689 unique donations totaling $255,000. On the left is the pledges that we've received to date, from AT&amp;T, our Chambers of Commerce, Franklin Templeton, Gilead, Google, Heritage Bank, and then, the list goes on. And so, those pledges are all dollars that will be utilized in Samatay County. But again, we need to keep raising money, and there are some cities that are looking at their financial situation as to whether they have unrestricted dollars that could use the Samatay County Strong Fund that then could be redeployed to an individual community. So, that is something to consider. We have a memo that is prepared that we'll be sending to the mayor and city manager. Hopefully, later this week is the plan. We also have, are very close to finalizing it. We'll go before the Board of Supervisors next Tuesday, the agreement with the Samatay Credit Union to actually open an online portal, an application process. And Samatay Credit Union has been a great partner in this, because they have offices from Daly City in the north to East Palo Alto and to the coast side. And they will be able to quickly have someone complete the application, upload the necessary documents. The back end of it, the technical piece, is being built. And Samatay Credit Union is in the certification process to be an SBA lender that can handle both the idle and paycheck protection loans, and they have fast-tracked their 501(c)(1) program. fast-tracked their 501(c)(3) status through the state of California. Because the reason that we're not using the Silicon Valley Community Foundation to distribute the business dollars is because as a 501(c)(3), there are strict IRS rules regarding donations to charitable causes. And so, we have many small businesses that are not a 501(c)(3), but we have to get the money out to them. So, the credit union is the perfect intermediary and has the ability to actually ramp this up really quickly. It's been very interesting because we have core service agencies. So, those agencies that everyone is familiar with, and you can deploy money very quickly. But, from a small business perspective, the SBA, Small Business Administration from the federal government, is very much used to working in individual disaster areas. So, whether it's a flood, a fire, a tornado, an earthquake. But, when you have a countrywide pandemic as we are in right now, it's a very different scenario, and it's very complex. And you've got to be able to build things really from the ground up very quickly. So, moving to the next slide, here is the, okay, we were there, so we just have to go ahead, please. So, we went through that here. So, working with cities' chambers, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and other stakeholders. So, you see San Bruno City Council this evening, the other councils, chambers, and groups that we've spoken to. We move on to the next slide. We're trying to get out information as fast as we can. This Business Continuity Action Plan was developed about two weeks ago. We are going to send out version 3. So, it's had, it'll be its fourth iteration, but it's 3.0. And it really helps a small business look at itself. What is it, what has it done over the last few weeks to assess their particular situation? And then, this only shows you the first page, but there's four other pages after it with links and resources from a legal and HR, a financial, and a general information perspective, to try to deploy as much information in one place as possible, to help our businesses really get a level set as to their situation and then what would work for them versus what would work for another business. So, that has been an interesting project, and really to look at 30, 60, 90 days out. If we go to the next slide, so here's just an overview of financial assistance. We talked about the San Mateo County Strong Fund, federal assistance. I can tell you, there's been a lot of frustration with people applying for both the Paycheck Protection Program as well as the Economic Injury Disaster Loan or Idle Loan. I was just on a call last night with the council in Pacifica and with their economic development folks today. We have been trying to get answers to a number of questions as to how do these things interrelate to each other? What are the timeframes for paycheck protection? You might not need it for the next two months, but you might need it, you know, two months down the road in June and July, for example. So, what are some of those issues that people are facing and why aren't they hearing back quickly? It speaks to our Employment Development Department, our EDD at the state level. There's been a lot of questions about self-employed and independent contractors because those folks typically in the past would not have been eligible for unemployment payments. But, they are, as it's been stated multiple times, but they're getting denied at the state level. So, we're trying to unwind that bit of a problem. Then, there's other programs through IBank and the California Capital Access Program, and then we're tracking small business grants. So, both from a financial perspective, and that's why we included the companies you see on the screen, as well as there are a number of companies, YouTube, Google, that are doing, and TechSoup, and Salesforce, and they're doing products as well as financial assistance. So, we're trying to keep track of all of those programs and also put that up in front of people. And I think that is my last slide, yes. So, Mayor Medina, I just want to thank you and the council and Vice Mayor Salazar and city manager Grogan. Really, it's been an honor to do this work on behalf of all the communities, and we're just going to keep pushing, pushing, pushing to try to get the maximum assistance for our county and our community.
And thank you again. I know you've been busy during the day as well as attending virtually council meetings. So, thank you for taking your time. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
I have a question. Through the chair. So, thank you, Ms. Faust. Can you hear me, Melissa?
We can hear you. I'm muted. I'm sorry.
No, no, great. Thank you. So, I just wanted to first thank you, Ms. Faust. I've been on the county calls as much as I can be, and you've been really, really helpful in getting the county really collaborating behind it, small businesses. And I thank you for also addressing the difficulties that are being had right now with the loans. I've heard it on the county calls, and I'm glad it's, we're being transparent with the public. I wanted to know if there are any priorities that are given based on the cities? So, is there an allotment that is going to happen or may eventually happen to each city based on its population or based on its business, the number of business licenses, it permits? Or, are you looking at any allocation like that as far as the money that has been received and then the actual money that will be provided to small businesses throughout San Mateo County?
Yes, council member Mason. So, the first $1 million that was allocated by the county of San Mateo, the recommendation that will be going before the Board of Supervisors is that that $1 million is divided based on population. And so, in looking at the population, because we were looking at different mechanisms for dividing the money and seeing, looking at past like transportation taxes and things that have been passed countywide, and population seems to be where we have landed. And then, with the additional money, that's all open for discussion with the Board of Supervisors, trying to do a balance between all of the cities. And then, again, if a city is able to contribute, you know, to make sure that their businesses receive a part of it. We're trying to be really fair and transparent across the board. And also, we have to do a very, after next Tuesday's Board of Supervisors meeting, we want to do a really strong marketing push, and we're going to ask every community to help us with this, so that everyone is aware that the application process is open, that the application will be in multiple languages. So, we really take that into consideration.
Okay. And then, just kind of a follow-up to that. As you may or may not know, San Bruno has really struggled to revitalize its downtown. And we were getting to a point where we were really seeing a lot less vacancies. We were starting to see the restaurants, you know, full again and people walking on the street. So, I'm really concerned about the impact that COVID-19 is going to have on our downtown. So, is it possible that one donation, two, I guess two more things. Is one, I know that some cities have made large contributions, and you just mentioned that a moment ago. So, I just want to be clear, will those cities be able to then come back and say, that's only for our small business community? And then, on the other side, can companies donate and say this percentage or this amount is to be reserved for this particular city?
So, that is going to be our recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. So, if a city donates X dollars that it wants deployed in its community, that would be our recommendation. And then, if a company or an individual wants to make a donation that is earmarked towards a particular community, absolutely. We feel that that is a way to really, one, increase the amount of donations because people want to see, I go to downtown San Bruno. I actually enjoy a holiday lunch with friends there every year that I look forward to. So, I 100% understand what you're saying. And so, we want to be able, for people's dollars, to be deployed in their community. So, yes.
Okay. And then, my last question around the financing is, the individual dollars that are being donated from just regular people, non-business donations, does that then go into a larger fund and that's just dispersed evenly? Or, kind of on a first-come-first-served? How is that dispersed?
So, the donations into the community foundation. So, if we went back to the slide with the different buckets, some people have earmarked their donations for individuals and families, some for nonprofits, again, core service agencies, and some for small businesses. So, those funds, we want to distribute on an equitable basis. That's how we're planning. And then, as the credit union reviews the applications, one of the reasons we are not recommending to put a timeline on actually like opening the application on such and such a date and closing it on another, is to keep it on a rolling basis because then it'll give us, all of us, a better understanding of how many more dollars we need to raise to save X more number of businesses. So, that's the thought process behind that.
Okay. And I take it back. Another question around the money. Is there any, just a suggestion, I don't know if this is even possible, but San Bruno, we are lucky that we have a community foundation, and we also have a Chamber of Commerce that's kind of getting up and running. And so, would it be possible, or is the idea being entertained, that those organizations would qualify to ask for a loan from the larger foundation, and then, within San Bruno, our small businesses could then apply for those grants or those loans directly with the nonprofit organization or the Chamber of Commerce?
So, I think that's a fabulous idea, and I'm happy to, if we could maybe talk offline and have that question asked to the community foundation with their dollars, if they'd be willing to do something like that. I mean, my feeling is, we should ask those questions. So, absolutely.
Okay. Yeah. And I haven't spoken with them, but if it's possible to streamline the process, wherein a nonprofit foundation is able to apply for the larger bucket and then disperse the funding within the local city, that might make it easier on the small businesses, and it might be faster than each small business applying directly to the county. But, I would love to talk to you more about that offline. And I do not represent the community foundation. This idea just came to mind as you explained, really this kind of complex system you guys have put together in the last two weeks. So, thanks again. It's a lot of work.
No problem. And I just think that with the community foundation, because I believe the San Bruno Community Foundation is a 501(c)(3), so there might be specific IRS, well, there would be. So, they would be able to actually be an intermediary for 501(c)(3) like organizations, but not necessarily the small businesses.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yeah. And that's, and thank you, Linda. Because of the 501(c)(3), I don't think they, for example, they may have restrictions to where they cannot give to a business because they're profitable, but they could give and like cause to same entities, is how I kind of.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Other questions for Roseanne while we have her, so we can let her maybe have dinner? Anything else?
Another question then, if nobody else has questions. I just, I spent a lot of time over the weekend on the website. That's why I have these questions and we have our, I see some of our business owner representatives are actually attending, so I want to make sure we get some of these answered. Just to, as far as the U.S. Treasury Department goes and the streamlining of your application for a loan, I, from my, I guess my own curiosity, but also for business owners, is if you've applied for one loan, can you also apply for the second loan? Is it possible to get both through the county and also through the federal government, or are they somehow intertwined?
So, with the federal loans, and we're trying to sort through this because there's been different messages whereby idle is for one thing, paycheck protection is for 500 employees less, and part of it could be forgiven. And this actually came up in both the congressional town halls with Congresswoman Eschew and Spear, and we're really trying to get clarification from the SBA, and the lenders are as well, so we know what can work together. And we are asking the question on the San Mateo County Strong Small Business as to if you've received dollars from somewhere else, but it's not going to preclude you from receiving a grant through, that's our recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. It wouldn't preclude it. What we're really trying to understand is how it works with the state, because even unemployment insurance with the paycheck protection, if you've laid off employees, but really, the paycheck protection program is designed for you to keep the employees on payroll. So, if they've gone on unemployment, but they come back, how does that impact it? What type of forgiveness? So, I've written all these questions down and we're kind of moving them up the food chain.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Medina.
Thank you, Roseanne. Be safe. Thank you very much for your time and all your work and effort.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
And then, Javon, city manager, we'll turn it back over to you. You're muted right now. There you go.
All right. I just want to say thank you to Roseanne for joining and being a part of our presentation. You really worked hand-in-hand to help us support our business community along with the San Bruno Community Foundation. So, thank you for being able to attend tonight. And so, now, I'm going to share my screen again, and we will turn it, we'll keep going through our presentation. And we will now go to a national presentation on national economics. We're going to start high, but then come down low pretty quick and talk about the unique impact to the city of San Bruno. And I now want to turn it over to Keith DiMartini, our finance director.
Thank you very much, Javon. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Keith DiMartini. I'm your finance director. And I would like to go through a series of slides that speak to what is happening in the nation's economy in regards to COVID-19 and the shelter-in-place orders that are in effect across the country. I'll then dive into what's happening across the state of California for many of the same economic indicators and a few other ones, and then dive into what's happening more locally, regionally within the county, and then locally here in San Bruno. And the whole purpose of providing these slides is to really provide a great deal of depth and context as to what's happening in the economy, so that we can understand at the staff level and the city council, how what is happening in the economy will impact the city's revenue sources that we rely on for the great services that we provide to this community. And so, I want to provide that context. And so, I'll hit these slides fairly quickly, and we'll jump into what the national economic trends are to start. First, I'll provide a summary of what the federal government's response has been to this pandemic. There were two massive stimulus packages that were approved by the federal government. First was a $2 trillion stimulus package called the CARES Act. And you can see a high level on this slide of the bullets that were included in this stimulus package. And then, there was a second package that was recently approved called the Main Street Lending Program to really support small businesses. The first bullet under the CARES Act, the Coronavirus Relief Fund for $150 billion, that is a source of funding that could potentially be used to support municipalities in the state of California. So, I want to dive into that one in just a little bit more detail here on this slide. Of the $150 billion, only 10% of it, about $15 billion of it, will be distributed to the state of California, and that's based on the population of all of the states. About 45% of it will be allocated directly to the state for their expenses. And there is no provision that requires any of that funding to be distributed to cities in a state that have a population of under 500,000 people. So, there is no guarantee at this time that any of that relief fund will come to the city of San Bruno. So, we will continue to monitor that and evaluate that going forward. There have been a series of grant opportunities that are available, primarily for assistance as it relates to firefighters, justice, and transportation grants. So, we will continue to monitor those grant opportunities as well. We are actively working very closely with the California Department of Emergency Services, which is called CAL OES, and the federal agency FEMA, on making sure that we have all of the processes and paperwork in order to eventually receive reimbursement for our city's expenses as it relates to the COVID-19 pandemic. It is clear, though, in reviewing the numbers that we will be presenting here in the coming slides, that the main impact to the city of San Bruno will not be our initial expenses related to our response. The ongoing economic issues from potential losses of revenues and variety of sources will be the most significant economic impacts that we will experience. And so, I want to make sure that we cover that in a great deal of detail as well going forward. So, here's two short charts here that describe the federal government impacts, two of many. The first graph on the left is called the Financial Stress Index. This index takes into consideration credit conditions across the country, market volatility, equity valuations, and access to funding for businesses so that they can, so that they can. and access to funding for businesses so that they can, so that they can, you know, gain funding to actually, to do more business. What you can see is the stress on the economy has dramatically gone up in the recent month here in March. Pretty close to where it was during the financial crisis back in 2009. On the graph on the right, you can see the federal government's balance sheet and it actually has a spike on the far right in March. The balance sheet change is really indicative of the federal government implementing monetary policy to buy government bonds and other assets in order to add a significant amount of money into the economy. It's their attempt at stimulating the economy substantially. And so they have taken drastic measures in order to stimulate the economy shown on these two graphs. This slide here shows the volatility in the stock market. This shows just two graphs of the S&amp;P 500 and the NASDAQ. In the month of March, you can see that there was a substantial drop in both of these stock markets. But as you can see, it kind of rebounded very slightly. And this is data as of April 10th. So you can see just a great deal of volatility. It is sort of the main takeaway on this slide. Moving on, this graph represents the change in American spending patterns as it relates to debit and credit card transactions over the past few months. As you can see, the rate of change in grocery purchases has substantially increased pretty much immediately following the shelter in place order in the state of California. And then it actually has sort of come down a little bit, maybe implying that there was a drastic increase immediately following and some spending patterns are maybe starting to level out a little bit. You can see a substantial decline in spending across entertainment, restaurants, transportation, shopping and travel. And so we will be sort of monitoring this closely so that we can understand better changes in the sales tax and sort of purchasing activity going on within the city of San Bruno so that we can better project our sales tax and other business license tax revenue, for example, going forward. This graph here shows the number of layoffs for permanent employees that occurred over the past, over the past year. And this graph does not show any significant change that occurred in layoffs for permanent employees in the United States in the month of March. But this following graph actually shows a fairly large increase for temporary staff in the United States that experienced a layoff or furloughs during the month of March. You'll see this trend is very consistent with what is going on in the state of California as well. This graph here shows the United States unemployment rate over the past 90 years. And what you can see here during the month of March into the early part of April, the United States unemployment rate has reached just over 17%. And that is higher than it's been since the Great Depression back in the late 1920s. And so we don't yet know if this rate will continue to increase, but again, we will monitor it. And this is a very similar rate that you'll see for California going forward. This graph here shows you just the last 15 years of what the change in the unemployment rate has been in the United States, again, showing the closest unemployment rate over the past 15 years being the 10% that was experienced during the Great Recession back in 2009, 2010. So moving on, speaking more about labor economic trends. This graph here shows the number of unemployment insurance claims that have been filed in the United States over the past year. And as you can see, it was a fairly steady volume up until the pandemic hit and the shelter in place orders took effect. And in last week alone, there were just over 6.6 million unemployment insurance claims that were filed in that one week alone. Sort of pivoting from unemployment economic indicators for a moment, let's now shift to changes that are occurring in property and real estate economics. This graph here shows the mortgage rate change for a 30-year fixed conforming loan over the past eight years. And what it shows you recently and over the past couple of years, actually, the rates have been steadily coming down and then have pretty drastically come down in the most recent few weeks leading up to and including into the pandemic as well. Along those lines, the opposite trend you can see here for folks that are wanting to refinance their primary loans on their residences. The number of people that are wanting to do that and take advantage of those low rates has drastically gone up. And you can see this chart here on the right, it's substantially higher than the peak that is seen in the United States economy over the past eight years. And so those trends may continue into the near future. So now I want to shift into speaking about economic indicators that are specific to the state of California, given the groundwork that we played in talking about some of the indicators in the United States. So the first, the first table I'd like to present here are some high-level sales tax revenue projections and the changes quarter over quarter in what is expected to occur in California next fiscal year. This table lists the sales tax revenues that are generated in the six or seven major industries in the state, ranging from automobile and transportation sales to building and construction, food and drug, fuel, general consumer goods, restaurants and so on and so forth. So from the beginning of the calendar year of 2019 into the calendar year, quarter one of calendar year 2020, you can see that many of these industries had already been experiencing a decline in sales tax revenue. But moving into quarter two of calendar year 2020, which is the quarter that we're in right now, it is anticipated that these, that most of these industries will experience a significant amount of sales tax revenue decline. The highest ones being automobile and transportation, restaurants and hotels and general consumer goods. And then the far right column shows you the percent change going into next fiscal year. So staff is reviewing this data with our sales tax consultant. And so we are, we're doing our due diligence to articulate what the revised sales tax projection will be for the city of San Bruno in this current fiscal year. And it will likely decline into our fiscal year 2021, given these forecast assumptions for the entire state of California. It's important to note here that we here in the city of San Bruno do have a number of these businesses in our city for auto and transportation. We have a couple of car dealerships and we have a significant amount of retail activity in Tanfran, Town Center, Bay Hill on San Mateo Avenue and a number of restaurants. So now moving into employment indicators in the state of California. This graph is similar to what we saw in the United States with not really seeing a significant change in permanent layoffs occurring in the state of California. But what you can see is that there is a significant increase for temporary workers in the state of California. Again, similar to what was shown in the United States graph. It's interesting to see what sectors of the, of the economy are experiencing higher layoffs compared to others. And as you can see on this graph, the most significant number of layoffs have occurred in accommodation and food industries with arts, entertainment and manufacturing kind of coming in far, far below what is being shown. This graph right here shows which regions of the state have experienced the highest number of layoffs. And as you can see, Southern California to date has been hit the hardest. They have experienced far more layoffs, again, probably given the size of their population and the diversity of their industries have actually been hit the hardest with the Bay Area coming in after Southern California. Moving on to California's unemployment rate, again, it's very similar to what is being experienced nationwide at around 17%, higher than what was at the Great Recession about 10 years ago. You can see the state's unemployment insurance claims. Also, this graph mirrors the United States in total. Last week, there was just under a million unemployment claims filed in the state of California. Kind of thinking beyond the initial impact of the shelter in place to unemployment and temporary workforce that have been laid off or put on furlough, there are a number of different jobs that are considered to be at risk for potential furlough or layoff due to the shelter in place orders. And you can see on this graph that those types of jobs range from, again, in the accommodation and food industries to retail, arts and entertainment, wholesale manufacturing. There are a number of industries that are, could potentially be impacted through the shelter in place orders continuing. Moving on to California property trends. This graph shows the weekly home listings throughout the state of California. And as you can see, there is a drop that occurred in the winter months, which is more seasonal in nature and which is definitely expected at that time of year. But as you can see, it's substantially dropped coming into the month of March, which is not typical for this time of year. This graph here shows the percent change of daily home showings for those properties that are on the market. And again, as you can see, the percent change week over week from the first week of January is substantially less. And the reason why these graphs are important, why we wanted to show those this evening is that, and you'll see in the coming slides, that staff at this time do not anticipate a reduction in our property taxes at this time. But these indicators suggest that we will likely see a decline in any potential increases to property taxes in the fiscal years to come. And so we will work to evaluate those, those changes in the upcoming budget as well. So I want to shift now and talk about CalPERS, the public employee's pension system that many, many municipalities across the state use and are members of to pay pension payouts for retirees. So this, the COVID-19 pandemic and the economic losses that many, that many companies have experienced hits CalPERS pretty significantly because a vast majority of CalPERS' assets that are used to pay our retirees are invested very heavily to make up those payments. And as you can see, the losses that they initially incurred were the greatest that they had experienced since the Great Recession back in 2008. These losses do impact municipalities in a few ways. First, CalPERS is likely to change their discount rate, which is based on the average rate of return that they expect to get on their investments of approximately 7%. And when they lower their discount rate, municipalities are required to pay a higher normal amount, which is an annual operating expense for municipalities. And the amount of the municipality's unfunded accrued liability increases as well. Let me just dive into that in a little bit more detail in the next few slides here. This graph shows the history over the past 20 years of what CalPERS' investment returns have been. And as you can see, for a majority of these years, all but four of them, they experienced positive and fairly high returns on their investments. But as you can see, in the years where the economy experienced a recession, CalPERS also had, also experienced negative investment returns. This table here shows what happens to the overall CalPERS investment fund when the investment rate of return that's targeted at 7% is not met. And so if you look at the miscellaneous plan, which represents most of the city of San Bruno employees, when CalPERS has an investment return of 7% on their investments, the entire portfolio is funded at just over 73%. But when the discount rate is reduced and their investment returns are decreased, the value of the entire portfolio drops from 73% to 68% when it achieves 0% and then it goes down further. And so again, the impact of that is municipalities have to contribute more to make up the difference. And that's really depicted here on this graph. This graph here shows what are the potential employer contributions into CalPERS to make up the required contributions. So for the city of San Bruno, you know, if the 7% discount rate is what is required, that's that blue line on the bottom. But when the CalPERS investment portfolio doesn't achieve a 7% rate of return, the city of San Bruno and all other municipalities across the state are required to pay more proportionately to make up that difference. In the fiscal year 1920 budget, the city of San Bruno pays just over $10 million in total to CalPERS. That covers both our normal cost per payroll and also the portion of our unfunded accrued liability. And that, if CalPERS reduces their discount rate, the amount that the city of San Bruno would have to pay to CalPERS would increase. And that will be something that staff will evaluate and analyze and present to the City Council during the upcoming fiscal year 2021 budget cycle. And so with that, I will turn it back over to the City Manager to talk in more detail about local economic indicators and the impact on the current fiscal year.
Thank you, Keith. So why don't we talk, bring it down to what we are experiencing and are likely to experience. I think the first thing is we don't know how long we'll be in this. From all the charts that Keith just went through, we certainly have a significant spike nationally and statewide and stress on the economy and unemployment. The question is, how long will that last? And when we look at history, really the only thing higher was the Great Depression. And so we really need to be very cognizant of our financial situation and understand that we are in a new paradigm financially. And I think as everyone sort of that has listened to the news cycle over the last 48 hours has heard that there's a lot of work being done to study how do we return our economy to pre-COVID-19 levels? What does that mean? How is that done? And so as those plans are developed statewide and with our local county health officer, that will impact our revenue. One of the things that we certainly know is that whenever the shelter in place order is over, it will likely be over before we have a vaccine that is widely available and in use. And so there will likely be a slow recovery to the economy and a slow progression to how people feel when they want to go out and be in public and go to the malls and things of that nature. And so that is all underpinning all of the analysis that we and everyone else is running right now. We know that there's a significant impact on our small businesses and our nonessential businesses are closed, but also a number of our essential businesses, some are deciding to close now and some have had their revenue significantly decreased even though they are essential. And our restaurants are a classic example of that. And so a lot of work is being done to see can restaurants be open with very limited in-room dining, but no word on that right now. And we all know our major retail centers, the city is in constant contact with the owners of Tanfran and the Onsite Property Management as well as Town Center and doing a lot of work, working with the Chamber of Commerce. And also no hotel occupancy, which is going to significantly impact what we like to refer to as TOT, transient room occupancy tax, but it's casually referred to as the hotel room tax. And we're likely to see these reductions for some time to come. So let's talk about impact on the city's budget. A quick overview of revenues. So these slides should be fairly familiar to the City Council and the public or anyone that watches our budget presentations. The first one is on our revenues. The vast majority of our revenue is property tax and sales tax, property tax at 24%, sales tax at 16%. And as the Finance Director mentioned, property tax likely more stable than sales tax. And our transient occupancy tax, but all represent a significant portion. And then when we look at expenditures, more than 50% of our general fund expenditures are for police and fire, protecting the community. That is not atypical among other agencies with the rest of the departments making up that. And a significant amount going to our community development department that supports development. And our community services department, which is actually the third highest, that runs all of our recreation programs, senior programs and library programs as well. And so let's talk a little bit of a comparison to other cities. I won't spend a lot of time on this slide, but this slide is being shown to just show how we stack up. in our total revenue compared to other cities. The largest sort of portion there is other revenue, which is a summary of a number of categories that were on the prior slide for San Bruno. But most importantly, I just want us to realize that every city will be impacted differently. And it really depends on the relative proportion of your revenue sources. So for us here, we have about seven percent of our revenue that comes from transient occupancy tax, our hotel room tax. But Burlingame, for example, has about forty-six percent, and that's shown by the the blue bar. I just tried to use my laser pointer, but we're versatile, so that didn't work. But also sales tax, sixteen percent of our city revenues are sales tax. In some in some cities that's smaller, like Millbrae, but in other cities that's larger. And so our unique impact with the revenue streams that are producing are really going to be reflective of our portfolio of revenues. And I just want to make that point that we can't always look to what's happening in another city because their context may very well be different and their reserves may very well be different. The next slide just shows our per capita revenue. We've seen this before, but it just shows where we fall relative to a per capita, per person comparison. And and we know that relatively, San Bruno receives less revenue than other cities. And the reasons for that are many. A number of the other cities have experienced more economic development over the last twenty years and have a different revenue base than ours. But sort of in in some of our neighboring cities and and the other larger cities in the county, we do on a per person basis receive less revenue. And and that's part of our reality and a reality that I think the council and the community knows that we need to address so we can better fund services in our our facilities. The next slide here just shows a a quick overview of our general fund for the prior year and the current year, only showing this to remind the public and the council that we have had deficits before, we have solved them before. And we we are entering a point where we have to be very cognizant with our revenues and and adjust our expenditures. And the city council really did an amazing job reducing the deficit this year. And that deficit of three hundred and twenty-five thousand was paid for by one-time money. And so it was one-time money for one-time expenditures. And so it wasn't an ongoing budgetary deficit, but it was using some accumulated fund balance that we had essentially money in the city savings account to make one-time improvements. The other point of this slide is that know that our general fund is fifty million in round numbers. So as we begin to talk about revenue shortfalls, think of fifty million as five percent is ten is ten, five million is ten percent, which is a significant amount of our general fund to 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 potentially be down around ten percent. So let's step into a few more slides on what our mid-year shortfall is. So the council and members of the public may remember that we took a mid-year shortfall of four point two million just in the month of February. And we saw the vast majority of that through a number of strategies. But that mid-year shortfall, about three hundred thousand was related to a decline in sales tax for the current fiscal year, not exclusively, but largely attributed to the closure of Sears, which had a direct impact in our sales tax that we would receive this year and ongoing. So the impact of that will be larger in the following fiscal year because we will have a full fiscal year. It's worth noting that we continue to be in close contact with the owner of that property, Saratage. And they do have a wonderful reuse plan that they are developing, but that is a long game, not a short game. A motor vehicle in Luffy, we were down one point one million. We have some good news that we will not be down that much, and so that'll come up a little bit later. But that's due to a number of school districts countywide switching their funding status to basic aid. Business license tax, mid-year, we were down seven hundred thousand. That is not exclusively, but largely related to the closure of the Sky Park property, off-airport parking facility on Sammatao Avenue that closed. We are in close communications and and working with the current owner of that property as well as their local representatives. And they are developing a reuse plan. But again, that will take several years potentially to 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 realize itself and to potentially return itself to the revenue that we were experiencing. And so that is a long game, but not a short game for the reuse of that property. Again, that airport parking facility closed due to changes in their market with how the San Francisco Airport has built a number of on-airport parking facilities and the advent of ride sharing, sort of reducing the profitability and viability of that business. And then we had a $2 billion reduction in building permit fees due to a few delayed projects that are delayed but not not occurring. So that's a timing issue. But we had a four point two million dollar gap. We solved three point seven of that, and we held back on solving about five hundred thousand until we had better information. But we delayed a number of capital projects, so two point seven million dollars worth of capital projects were delayed. We delayed hiring some vacant positions. We delayed some, we reduced some operating costs. We reduced our allocation to our equipment reserve, and we used some money in what can be referred to as the city's savings account, our unappropriate, unappropriated fund balance. So next, I want to talk a little bit about what the impacts in the current fiscal year are when we really combine three things, the mid-year shortfall, COVID-19, and our vehicle license fee revenue adjustment, which is a bit of a bright news in this whole financial portrait. And so I'll go over the high level, and then our finance director will come back and give some details, and then I'll I'll step back up. So when we look at the revenue loss, so we have put together our estimate for what it means to the city of San Bruno with looking at what we're likely, what we know we're experiencing, which is a shelter in place through May third. What that means for the rest of this fiscal year, we projected out, assuming that even if there the shelter in place is lifted, there would be a significant slow ramp up in the May through June months of of retail and hotel occupancy. And so our best projection is that we're down $3 million in revenue loss, and that's TOT transient hotel room tax, that sales tax from all of our nonessential businesses being closed and some of the essential businesses being closed. A significant amount. We've already, we're also reduced a number of operating expenditures due to the shelter in place. So we're not running some programs, so that that is a savings. While we have a number of part-time staff that would have supported those programs that are not working. In addition, there are some ins and outs here because because we have limited our operations to only essential services that really affects things that we can do, and and there are some budgetary savings that we can realize. And so that's a total of six hundred and eighty thousand. But then we also have a projected expense of three hundred and forty-one thousand for our work to address the direct impact of COVID-19. A large portion of that is supplies and equipment and some staff costs. And so what that means is that we believe that the impact to the current year budget as a result of COVID-19 is two point six million dollars. And so there's a number of components when we total everything up. And so when we, the next slide up sort of brings it all together. One beginning with the mid-year, so we had a four point two million dollar shortfall at the beginning of the mid-year. We implemented about three point seven million of strategies, which left a half a million remaining from that mid-year shortfall that we were going to talk about at our third quarter presentation, which was due in the month of May. And so we will still have that. And then when we look at at the two point seven million that we're impacted by due to the general fund impact on COVID-19. And the the bright spot here is that we did just yesterday receive updated information on our vehicle license fee from the county. And thankfully, there was an adjustment made to every city in the county. And our portion of that means that we will receive nine hundred thousand dollars more than we're projecting. And so the good news is that what was looking like a three point two million dollar deficit is now a two point three million dollar deficit, but that's bad news. And so we need to work to address that and develop strategies. And so we are literally in the process of doing that. Tonight's presentation is really to provide the city council and the public with the analysis that has been done to date. And we will be back before the city council with strategies very shortly. So right now, I'm going to pause and turn it over back to our finance director, who will go into a little bit more detail of what these impacts are. And then I will come back up to talk further.
Thank you very much, Javon. And so I will just walk through in a little bit more detail the high-level financial impacts related to COVID-19 on the city of San Bruno, starting first with our revenues. And so as the city manager indicated, we will be experiencing some revenue impacts in a variety of our revenue sources, primarily from sales tax, transient occupancy tax, and various departmental revenues. At this time, we are not projecting any decrease in our property tax revenue or business license tax revenue. And I want to go into detail and explain that for this current fiscal year. But it is likely that we will experience some decline in those revenue sources in the coming fiscal year. So this table summarizes, it lists the components that make up the $3 million projected revenue reduction that staff is projecting in this current fiscal year. And as you can see, the greatest portion of that $3 million revenue reduction comes from reduced sales tax revenue. The next largest is our transient occupancy tax. It's more commonly known as the hotel tax. And then you can see the other reductions coming from departmental revenues in community services, building permit fee revenue, and the police department for parking fines and other reimbursements. So I'd like to step through each one of these in just a little bit of detail to explain the methodology and the assumptions and project and projections that staff use to develop each one of these individually. So first, starting with property tax. Again, to reiterate, staff is not projecting any reduction in our property tax revenue in the current fiscal year. The property tax installment for the second installment to the county was delayed from April tenth as the as the initial due date to May fourth. The Board of Supervisors in Sammatao County authorized that just recently, without any penalties being issued on May fourth. Staff is anticipating that there will be some sluggish property tax revenue and a potential decline in coming years potentially based on based on some historical data in recent recessions and just less new construction activity and home sales on prior economic indicator slides. There may also be potential reassessments of property values, of properties, if the values of them have declined recently as well. This graph here shows the total assessed valuation of all properties in the city of San Bruno. And it does show, on average, an increase, you know, sort of annually, year over year. But what it does show is that in the two recent recessions that had occurred over the past twenty-five, twenty-six years, it does show a decline in assessed valuation immediately following those recessions and for a few years thereafter. And that's a little bit more clearly depicted on this graph, which shows the annual change of the assessed values of all the properties in San Bruno. And immediately following nine eleven, you can see that there that there was a recession and that property values declined just over twelve percent from the prior year when that recession hit. And then, as you can see, with the Great Recession that occurred just about ten years ago, that there was a leveling off that occurred with property values and that there was actually, and that was actually followed by two years of property value decline before it started slowly and gradually rising a few years after that. So although the city of San Bruno is not at this time projected to reduce its property tax revenue at this time, it may actually incur reduced property tax revenue in a few years from now, depending on the on the the length and the depth of the recession that that could follow. So now I'd like to talk about sales tax. This pie chart here shows the proportional share of the sales tax revenue by industry within the city of San Bruno. And so the main takeaway on this slide is that some of the major portions of our sales tax revenue come from industries that unfortunately were hit very hard from the shelter in place order. And that includes automobile and transportation sales, restaurants and hotels, and general consumer goods. Those sectors were hit substantially during the shelter in place order. This pie chart here shows the proportional share of the sales tax revenue in the major retail and high sales tax generating geographic areas within the city of San Bruno. As you can see, the area that that generates the most sales tax revenue comes from the transit corridor area, and that does include Sammatao Avenue. The next is from Tanfran, others scattered throughout the city limits, and then Town Center is at nineteen percent. And again, most of these of these high, these high-volume retail and other sales tax generating operations have either closed completely or have some reduced, some reduced operation because of the shelter in place order. Again, this graph shows about the same, just the the main takeaway on this, on this chart showing our sales tax by major industry again is that the industries that are hit the hardest from the shelter in place order are those industries that the city of San Bruno relies on to generate sales tax revenue. So there were a few state of California executive orders from the governor that impact the state and municipal governments within the state, within, within the state to realize that sales tax revenue. The the state of California enacted a deferral program of up to potentially $3 billion statewide, and that provides relief to over three hundred thousand businesses that are able to potentially defer their sales tax remittances to the state, which then would delay the state redistributing that sales tax revenue back down to municipalities. And for the city of San Bruno, that 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 amount is about $720,000 potentially in the current fiscal year. There is also another program that provides specific relief to small businesses, and it allows them to defer up to $50,000 of remitting their sales tax to the state for up to twelve months. And that that the impact of that on the city of San Bruno is just over $320,000. And it's also anticipated that there may be some new buying habits for consumers out there. And that is sort of to be determined, how that might impact our sales tax revenue. So overall, as I mentioned earlier, we have some areas of the city that are hit harder than others. With its potential that there will be a sort of a slow ramp up in sales tax activity in June into July into the rest of calendar year twenty twenty. And overall, the projected deficit, the projected revenue loss, as the city manager said earlier, is about one point one million dollars. And at this time, the the projected revenue reduction into next fiscal year is just over four percent. But again, we will continue to evaluate and analyze that data to come up with a firm sales tax revenue projection for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The next revenue source that's anticipated to have a reduction in the current year is our transient occupancy tax. And the assumptions here are that there was very, very little occupancy occurring in our, in San Bruno hotels in the second half of March, and that will continue into April and May with a gradual, slow ramp up starting in June and into July. And so the net impact of the the lack of occupancy in those hotels results in approximately $635,000 of lost TOT revenue for the city of San Bruno. Moving on to business license tax. At this time, the city is not anticipating any lost revenue from business license tax. That's primarily due to the annual recertification program for businesses occurring at the beginning of the fiscal year. So we recognize most of that revenue in July. Staff will be analyzing the potential impacts of the shelter in place order and any impact to businesses' gross receipts that is the basis for the tax into the upcoming fiscal year's budget in twenty twenty-one. But again, at this time, we are, we are not projecting any lost revenue in business license tax. So now moving on to departmental revenue. First, the first apartment I'd like to present is our community services, our community services department, which includes our recreation programs, the senior center, the library and parks. As the city manager indicated earlier, most of our programs, not all of them in recreation, aquatics, sports, classes, senior center programs have all been delayed, are postponed right now. They're not, they're not occurring, and we are not able to recognize any revenue from those programs. Also, with the reduction of revenue, we are, we will experience some reduced causes because Also, with the reduction of revenue, we will experience some reduced costs because many of those programs are not occurring. The net projected impact on the city's budget, the net loss from all of those activities is about $72,000. Moving on to our community and economic development department, which is the department that reviews planning applications and building permits. The governor's order significantly reduced the type and the volume of building and construction activity that is allowed to occur and really only limited to essential activities. This will result in staff only being able to review essential building permits and conduct inspections on those as well. Planning applications are still being accepted, and a few of the large development projects that are already in the pipeline, such as YouTube Phase One and Mills Park, are still proceeding without delays. But the net impact of the reduced permit volumes is projected to be around $326,000 in the current fiscal year. And then the last departmental impact comes from our police department. There are fewer community service officers that are not issuing parking tickets and other citations at this time, and we do have some reduced security services that the department provides as well. So there's a loss of revenue there, but that's also partially offset from some savings that the department is anticipating in reduced part-time salaries, reduced overtime expenses, equipment, and uniforms. And so the net impact on the police department is a loss of about $179,000. So now I just summarized the impacts to the city's general fund, but I'd like to take a moment to talk about the new district sales tax that was actually just implemented on April 1st, more commonly known as Measure G, that the voters of San Bruno voted to approve back in November of 2019. So the voters approved a behalf sent sales tax measure that increased the sales tax up to 9.75%. That sales tax rate took effect on April 1st, so just a few weeks ago. And it was initially projected that the revenue generated from that additional tax would generate approximately $4 million annually. And so because the rate took effect on April 1st, that represents about three months' worth of activity. The projection was about $1 million that would likely come in from that revenue source. As council might recall, that amount was not budgeted. We did not budget that revenue source to really make sure that we understand the timing and the frequency of that revenue coming in. And so there's no budget loss because that was actually not budgeted. But it is important to note that the revised projection for fiscal year 1920 for three months of activity has been brought down to $150,000, down from $1 million. And so that's just fewer Measure G dollars that can be used for a variety of different services and projects. So now I'll like to shift gears from talking about revenue, and now let's talk about expenditures. And so as the city manager indicated, there are a number of additional expenditures that the city has incurred that is directly related to the city's response efforts related to COVID-19. So on this slide right here, it summarizes the types of expenses that have already been incurred, and that ranges from staff costs, primarily overtime, and the paying of many of our part-time employees, their scheduled time. But then other non-salary items include the purchase of a variety of different personal protective equipment to ensure that the city's staff is safe performing their jobs. We've also had to procure a number of cleaning supplies to ensure that our facilities are clean and disinfected, some IT equipment to ensure that we're communicating effectively with the public, and that our emergency operations are running efficiently, and a few other expenses. So that totals just under $180,000 of expenses that have been incurred to date. So with the expenses incurred to date, staff has developed a projection of what is anticipated to be spent for the entire fiscal year on COVID-19 response efforts. And that projection brings us to just over $340,000. It's important to note here that staff is working very closely with state and federal agencies on ensuring that we do receive the maximum amount of reimbursement for the expenses that we have incurred. And there's a couple differences that you might notice on this slide. Staff is accurately tracking all of our staff time of the more than 80 employees that have currently dedicated time to response efforts. That time, although not paid as overtime, a majority of that time is potentially reimbursable. So we are doing our best to track all of those expenses to ensure that we can achieve the maximum reimbursement from the state and federal sources. As I said, we're working with our federal state agencies, and the reimbursement process, we will provide updates to city council over the life of this event and for the many months to come. About 75% of the expenses that are deemed allowable are potentially reimbursable, and staff will work closely with city council and these agencies to ensure that we move through all those processes. We will also continue to explore any federal grant opportunities that may be out there to support our efforts, and then also look to see if there's any insurance that we might be able to leverage for business interruption for our losses of revenues as well. And so with that, I will turn it back over to our city manager to talk about our reserve funds and then a preview of the budget cycle here to come.
All right. Thank you, Keith. And so let's talk a little bit about reserves, because in times like this, that's why you have reserve funds. The city has a number of reserve funds, first of which is what we call our fund balance. We have a policy of 1.5 million. We began this fiscal year, the 1920 fiscal year, with that very last column on the right, a little bit over 2 million in that fund. We had a general fund reserve of 12.7. We had a capital reserve of 5.3, an emergency disaster reserve fund of $23 million on the books. The story, as the city council knows, in raw cash is a lot different, and that is a part of our reality that we have to take a hard swallow and realize. And so our total general fund reserve, as shown on the prior slide and at the top of this slide, is 23.5 million. However, since about 2008, the city's city net services department, now titled, or currently titled City Net Services, previously titled The Cable Fund, has utilized the city's reserve to cover their annual deficits and capital expenditures. And so in real dollars, just under 16 million or 15.7 million has been spent, and so the cash balance in our general fund reserve fund right now is 7.7 million. And I'll pause there because we had a little hiccup that I want to apologize publicly to the council and to the community about with regard to city net services over, really, beginning April 1. But the public and our members of the public that utilize city net services saw a pre-planned rate increase that took effect April 1st, and many of them have been wondering why was this rate increase instituted? And the answer is on the screen before you. It's because the department over the last more than 10 years has used, since 2008, has not covered its costs, and it's an enterprise fund. And we have been subsidizing the rates, and so the last time the rates were increased was 2007. We developed a plan over a number of months to increase rates and then communicated that, but the hard truth of that is that the communication was not sufficient. There was a notice on the March bill, there was a notice put on the website, and there was a notice on the April bill, and all were insufficient, and a number of members of our community saw that rate increase without prior warning. And so I want to apologize for that. But we have taken steps to write that enterprise. As the city council knows, we developed a business plan that really hinges on the fiber to the home project, but also hinges on the first thing you do when you find yourself in a hole is stop digging. And so we've done a number of things, including renegotiating contracts, making channel selection changes to make sure that that enterprise can cover its costs, because we cannot continue to let the enterprise use the city's reserve fund to cover its annual deficits. And in times like this, we need that cash to protect the community. And so we did develop a plan before COVID-19, but unfortunately, that was not well communicated, and we are rectifying that as we speak. Staff is working to develop new communication tools and working on some customers that did receive a number of stacked rate increases because they participate or subscribe to a number of premium packages. We're going to cap those on the higher level plans to a maximum increase of $25. And so that will be formally announced and rolled out. But we're running an enterprise that provides cable, entertainment, and also access to the internet, and we have a long-term strategy to write that. And unfortunately, the rate increases hit right as the community was going through COVID-19. So our total reserve, when we account for that cable or city net services deficit that is currently alone, and we include our other funds, is $11.8 million. And so that is the cash on hand that we have to address the current economic downturn. I think likely we're all going to look back at March and realize we were already in a recession, but no one's calling it officially a recession, so I should not. And so what are our budget strategies and next steps? They're being formulated. And so the strategies we're looking at are listed. I'll go through a few of them. What I want to say is, over the last four or five days, I've had video calls with all of our departments where all of our employees were on it. The reality is the economic impact to San Bruno is going to mean that our organization may look a little different, the services we provide to the community may look a little different. We've done a lot of analysis like other cities have, and so everyone is stepping into this slowly. Frankly, we'll know more in two weeks than we know today. We really need to know when the economy restarts. We know enough now to know that in the current fiscal year, we're looking at significant revenue loss, and we are prepared for that. And with the analysis that is being provided to the council and the community, what comes after that is our strategies. And so potentially service level reductions, potentially deferring additional capital projects, looking at shared staff resources, holding vacant positions. The organization knows that while we have some vacant positions now, those are being reviewed with extreme scrutiny, and we will likely not move forward with a number of those. We are identifying ways to utilize our reserve funds, knowing that given their levels, we cannot rely on them exclusively, but utilizing a portion of those, potentially utilizing some of the Measure G revenue, even though that has gone down from $1 million projected this fiscal year to $150,000. We will also likely start formally talking to our bargaining groups and look at some other strategies that we, this list may very well be longer. So our projection, we're refining the projections. We will come to the city council with a third quarter update on May 12th. We may also return sooner than that as more information is developed and strategies become a little clearer. And we will absolutely need to seek city council approval for a number of them, changes to our expenditures, use of the reserve, use of both the regular and the emergency reserve, Measure G, and any other things that may be on the list. And so budget prep, before we go there, we wanted to talk about our comprehensive fiscal sustainability project. And so while some members of the public may be tuning in to this presentation and without the benefit of some of our prior budget conversations, we have an existing comprehensive fiscal sustainability project that we launched in November 2018, really as a minimum of a 24-month project to restore fiscal health. Frankly, that is under revision now because of the impact of COVID-19. And so we're analyzing the current and immediately projectable economic impacts, and we're going to adjust this year's budget as well as next. And we've taken a number of steps, and I think the city council and the community should be proud of the organization for everything that has been done to get us to this point now, but we have to adjust on the fly, retool the project, and deal with what has been placed before us. And so many of this, a little bit of this has been touched on, but by the finance director, Measure G, that took effect on April. We have a fee study project that, the study session for that has been delayed, but we'll come back to the city council. And then we are also, as the community and the council knows, exploring additional revenue sources. We had prior direction from the city council to look into a potential increase in our hotel room tax, also called the transient occupancy tax. And from our budget conversations, last fiscal year, we know that our stormwater fund has some significant funding challenge, and we've been looking at ways to prop that up. This is our budget calendar. We launched internally with our city departments on May 21st. This has sort of truncated a lot of work happening in February and March. But right now, we are scheduling our city council priorities and strategic initiatives meeting that was planned for March but was delayed due to our response to COVID-19. And so I think based on the responses, we're looking at next Tuesday, April 21st, not the 24th. And then we have a number of conversations and meetings in April, late April, May and June, in order as we step toward the city council's adoption of the budget in time for July 1 of next fiscal year. Challenges, as we all know, sort of lingering and sluggish economic recovery, and it'll likely require a number of things that we've talked about. Next steps, we're going to continue to collaborate with our county officials as we all respond to COVID-19 and the long-term recovery plan, I'm sorry, the long-term plan to step out of the shelter in place is actively being put together, and a number of people here at the city of San Bruno are working on that and thinking locally. We'll continue to modify what's called our continuity of operations. Continue to develop our contingency of operations plan for public safety and our other city departments. We'll continue to monitor and assess programming. I think the public knows that at this point, recreation programs, senior programs and library programs are not occurring, and we're making those decisions about programs that will occur in the summer months as we need to, as more information becomes available. And so we're not announcing any major changes right now to what's planned in the summer, but we know enough to know that they will not likely look like they did in prior summers. And so that's it. That is the closure of our presentation, I guess 101 slides. So thank you. It doesn't include Roland Throuse's few slides. But council, that's all we have as far as the formal presentation. Keith and I are here and ready to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both to the manager and to the finance director. And so let's bring it to council. Also, I want to give an opportunity for anybody in the public who also may want to have input too, with it a little after nine. Why don't we go ahead and start with Marty? And if anybody from the community wishes to, if you could start to raise your hand, and then we can maybe bring you in after, in case you need to depart. So Marty?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for that 101-page slide deck. It's a lot of information. It's a lot of, this is incredible amount of effort, and it's going to be hard to get through, but I'm sure we're going to do it. So I have a couple comments and suggestions. The first comment is regarding COVID-19 testing. I, along with the mayor and our other council members, are on these countywide calls three times a week, and we repeatedly hear that we need more testing. Well, San Bruno doesn't test. That's the county is taking the lead on that. And it's gotten to a point where because of lack of personnel, lack of PPE, lack of test kits, that it's not moving as fast as we all would like it to across the county and across the state. It's not moving as fast as we all would like it to across the county and across the state. To the point where the governor is trying to figure it out as well. So I wanted to address that because so many, so many people are talking about the need for testing. My, my question. Now is regarding the homeless. If we are going to allow them to shelter in place. Should we not be providing porta potties, hand washing stations, maybe even. Some dumpsters. So that it doesn't get out of hand and that at the very least. Those that are in that condition, they can help protect themselves by washing their hands and going to the restroom in a porta potty instead of. You know, around the corner on a bush. Mr. Mayor, do you want me to continue on, I have two more, or should we wait for the answers or?
No, go ahead Marty, that's good and so, because whatever the answer comes back, some of us may want to piggyback on some of the.
Got it, got it, great, great. The other thing is, is we're. Either myself and on social media, we're seeing people that are not practicing safe social distancing. So what is the appropriate thing that somebody should do if they go by and see a bunch of kids playing? At a ball field, I saw it the other day where the kids, like kids do, you jump a fence if it's locked, right? So is there a number, is it the police dispatch, it's definitely not 911. What additional efforts are we doing to try to help advise our residents of that and to actually enforce it? And then. My, my recommendation regarding getting the information to our business owners is. If we could put together a video. The, the video that have, the production of the videos that have been going out are excellent. And it's something that we could refer people to a YouTube channel that has that information so that. All that can be repeated and stop and record, or stopped and replayed for people to understand better and also to have it in. Other languages that you could just have a, the information dubbed. On top of that, so those are my comments, thank you very much for that presentation, it was. It was a lot to take and this is, this is a little overwhelming, but I'm sure we're going to get through it, so thank you.
Sure, Jovan. Sure, yeah, we are in unprecedented times, I think to step through your questions. As far as the suggestions on, on ways to provide additional information to the community and the business community. Our PIL team, I know is watching and has noted that and. And we'll take that back. In regard to enforcement. Enforcement is, is, is a tough thing, right? To enforce means to bring people in close contact with another person or many other people and. What we are trying to do and everything that we are doing is to disassociate ourselves and not to put our employees at risk. To provide enforcement. I, I think if we want to step back globally. Everything we are doing is on education and voluntary enforcement. Or voluntary compliance and I think. Countywide, citywide, people are remarkably complying for their own safety and for the safety of other individuals. I think that we have a number of unique instances, businesses that were operating and. Specific contact was, was made. And to educate them on the order. We do not have the resources for people to call 911 every time they see a group of kids. At the park, I think our best resource to have conformance is for. Everyone to take responsibility for themselves and their families. And everyone to articulate that to people they love. I think nationally we have seen that sometimes younger people are not believing the statistics and so we have to do everything we can to continue to educate that. And when our officers that are out see people, they do remind them of the order. But to, to tell the public to call 911 when you see people gathering together. We don't know if they're in the same household. And so we've had a number of, of calls like that frankly already. Where people see a number of people walking together at the park. And so we don't want to encourage people to call 911 when they see a group of people together because they very well may be in the same household. I think we have to continue to remind people that we're doing this for our own safety. And the safety of others and we know that people are dying and people are asymptomatic and that's the reality. In regard to homeless and sheltering in place, I should probably clarify that. We are not going to simply allow homeless encampments. To be and have the negative quality of life impacts. We have stepped up our cleaning of them and we will address any issues of criminality. And if anything gets to the point where there needs to be a forced eviction. However, the CDC guidance and the guidance from the county is to not move people because it's not in the interest of public health. And so we are complying with that like other jurisdictions within our county and across the Bay Area. And, yeah, and, and other parts of the country because the CDC is a federal organization and they do have guidance to all municipalities. In regards to providing additional support to homeless encampments, all of those items that you mentioned are being looked into. There are triggers for doing that, that comes with a financial cost, but we are, we are looking at all of that.
Just, just one, one more thing, Mr. Mayor. I do want to thank our city manager for acknowledging the city net services. Information, I, I think that's really important to, that. It's just, it's a fresh, it's a fresh air to be able to, to take responsibility and we're going to fix that, so. I, I wanted to thank you for that. That's it.
Thank you Marty and Melissa, do we have anybody so far, just not, no, okay. Just want to follow up, just something on if it's okay. Then, because I don't see any of their hands up right this second, then we'll go to Laura. Is on the testing, that is something that was, you know, has been brought up, like you said. And I had reached out to Jackie Spear's office last week just to check into other elements because somebody said, you know. Hayward does have a facility, it's ran through the county, just like ours has ran through the county with the fairgrounds. It is free, but you are still screened, so you have to have the temperature, you have to answer the questions, you have to be in a risk category. Tell you that Dr. Charity Dean is now the chair of a task force on testing that the governor established last weekend. It's supposed to be addressing the issues in the supply chain, finding solutions for testing shortfalls, looking to identify more. Justin Clotchen sites and analyzing laboratory science that is becoming available, ramping up testing by five times more capacity. That is something that also is the challenge when I talked to the county manager Monday. Before the county meeting that Marty referenced, it was again on the homeless and testing. But again, it is about the kits, some of the things that Marty alluded to. It's also about the criteria, it's very stringent, it's very strict about who gets to get tested. So what they're, what the congresswoman has been doing, the county has been pushing with the governor's office. Which they're now examining it, is how do we broaden that? So how do we have people who take care of individuals, how do we have people who are in our grocery store personnel? That they're allowed to have that same mechanism as a public safety personnel? So it is to broaden that horizon so that we can do it because the fairgrounds in San Mateo are being underutilized. It's been acknowledged that the county means, been acknowledged and so we need to vamp that up, but it's also a matter of. Us trying to be collaborative, I've spoken, spoken, excuse me, to the South City Mayor and the Daily City Mayor this weekend. And they don't have sites noted they plan to for the same elements that the county has told us on the county meetings. So I just wanted to touch bases that was fresh in my head on that, on just the testing and then I'll, I'll let. Laura, you're next.
Mayor Medina, I did want to clarify, we do have one member of the public with their hand raised, but we also have council member. Davis, Vice Mayor Salazar and Councilmember Mason's hand up too.
What would you prefer Laura, you want to go?
I, I was going to just comment, I do have some comments, but I would really like to hear from the public first.
Okay, Melissa, if you don't mind, colleagues, if you don't mind, it's one person, we'll allow them, please.
Sure, it's, it's either Steven Seymour or Sandra Perez, I will allow them to talk and unmute them.
Hey, this is Steven Seymour.
Hello.
So I, I just wanted to follow up on, are you guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good, because I just got a weird screen. But I just want to follow up on what Marty brought up. While the guidance is not to move homeless camps, what Marty mentioned was. Are there facilities or like the ability to put a hand wash? Or porta potty or something where these homeless camps are? So that we can reduce the risk to the general public and also to the people that are in the homeless camps. I can understand if they have said they don't want to seek a room in one of these hotels that we have. But over near 380, right off of El Camino, there's at least four or five people there and they have a tent that probably took several days to erect. I'm sure that the people who live nearby have concerns, so that's something that. City manager Jovan did not respond to when Marty asked that, I would be interested in his response to that. And then also I'd like to mention, we've been walking our, in our neighborhood just to get some exercise. And one thing I have noticed is. There are many, many, many more people that are blocking the sidewalks and even parked on the sidewalks. And you can look right to the street and see that there are either spaces to block the driveways so that they're not blocking the sidewalks. Or to actually park on the street. Yet people have decided not to use that now and I think it's because they know that they're not going to be sighted. So I, I realize that the, the city's taken a stance that they don't want to cite people because people may have lost their income. But on the other hand, we have people I believe who are abusing the system right now and it's making it difficult for those of us. Who are walking this past weekend and we sent a video to you all. We, my wife and I witnessed a lady with a stroller who had to walk into the street with two children in a stroller because there was somebody. And Mayor Medina, thank you very much for going out there, it's been cleared up. But I do think that that's something that our police department could probably be facilitating, doing a better job of facilitating. Because I believe that people are taking advantage of it right now, thank you very much, I appreciate the time.
Thank you for your comments. Laura, you were up next.
Thank you, so I'm, I'm glad that city manager clarified the question on the homelessness and. To Steven Seymour, I had the exact same comment and question and follow-up that I have as well. I actually looked at the CDC website and it refers to that. If they're not able to find housing for them. Which I hope that we can get them into a hotel of some sort, but that we're not to move them for the potential increase in the infectious disease being spread. And like he says, so then what are we doing to provide them? I mean, let's be, let's, I think the bottom line is, anybody who's on this call today or listening from home. And you have a homeless encampment that gets set up across the street from where you live. And you've got kids out playing or whatever, you don't want it. And so I feel the, the pain that any resident in San Bruno would feel that we're, the message we're hearing is. If they set up a homeless encampment, we can't do anything about it, we can't move them, so. I'd like to make sure we try to get them moved as soon as possible because if they're not there now, we shouldn't allow them to come. And if, and if we can't find them a place or not interested in life moves, we work with the county to try to get them a hotel room. And if not, we try to set up the appropriate. Porta potties, et cetera, so we can keep them contained and sheltered in that location. Because I do worry. My next comment would be to Jovan and Keith as well, our city finance director, excellent presentation, it was a lot of information. But if you didn't get the gist of that, that things are changing and they're not going, they're not. Going down a path of actually very scary times. I see what we already pay, I think Keith mentioned $10 million to CalPERS. And when they don't receive a 7% return on investment and that number becomes a negative number. We'll be paying and increasing CalPERS for years to come. And we will be, the city will be struggling to balance our budget year after year after year. So unfortunately, I know as rest of the council members, we will start to see some serious cuts. Furloughs, which are already happening, cutbacks to times back prior to 2008. It is not, it's not moving in a good direction. My other, my other comment is that I want to remind residents that we still can find. And, you know, I know that we have this soft approach that basically says we're notifying them, we're letting them know, we're moving them along. But people are getting fined, there's been a lot of commentary in the last few days about people out of the county. Going into an area, oh, I'm going grocery shopping, but I live in this county, are getting fined up to $1,000. We know about the college kids at Santa Cruz that were fined in Santa Cruz for attending, go ahead and at the beach. So, you know. San Mateo County, along with the other six counties, did institute that you can find. I hope that our own residents and people coming into San Bruno can, you know, be responsible citizens and not gather and move on and only come in for essential needs. I, I really hope to push because that is something that keeps all of us safe and healthy. And then my final comment is. How do we balance a budget going forward and I guess I just want to leave it at that, that we need to think differently. We need to think about ways we're doing things and figure out. How we can cut back, how we could. You know, offer services we were offering before that maybe are no longer essential. How do we live within our means? And I want to also thank city manager for commenting on the city net services. My phone was blowing up this week. It, it's, it was. Very frustrating to hear them share their, their concerns and frustrations and so we've got to do better, thank you.
Anything city manager or I'll move on to Mr. Salazar?
A lot, a lot of, a lot of comments, so Laura, thank you. Yeah, this is a, the budgetary challenge that we're facing is significant and we will. Continue to develop solutions to implement them. I think one of the, the realities that we're facing is that. We went into this economic downturn not as healthy as some other cities. Because we have not had a lot of economic development over the last 20 years. And so we are touching base with a number of developers and owners of properties in town. And the good news is that the reception that we received is positive and. And people still view San Bruno even in a downturn that may last. Several months or as somewhere where they, where they want to do business and so our planning staff may be at home, but they're busy working. But if it gets any, any worse, I think we're going to have to accept the fact that we missed the development window and shift our focus to. Making sure that we can be the first city out of the gate because. We can't tax our way out of this problem, we have to grow ourselves out of this problem. And cuts to the budget will be hard. I, I think the city council and those that have watched our budget presentations over the year. So, or people that are around the city and know the, the level of building maintenance, we've, we've been able to do with the, with the depressed resources. It's a challenges, it's a challenge and the cuts will be real. In regard to cable net services, absolutely. The communication on that was, was not sufficient by any stretch. I know that the police department, back to enforcement, is in conversations with the county. That, that did say that citations was not the way that we wanted to go in this county. By and large, though, people are, are complying and we need to continue with the positive messaging for people to do that.
Mr. Salazar?
Thank you, so first of all, I wanted to thank staff for that report, that, that was a very detailed and well thought out report and I also appreciate the, the candid nature. Of, of the news and for not sugarcoating any of this and it's definitely. A lot of sobering and, you know, not necessarily positive news in there. Fortunately, I think that this is something that, that will be probably more short-lived than. than, um, the, the last, uh, you know, um, economic hiccup we saw in, in past years. So I am hopeful that we're going to get past this, uh, quickly and, um, you know, want to make sure that we stay focused on, on the long term and that we not, um, overreact, uh, make too many drastic decisions upfront and really start thinking about this in, in a broader context. Um, most of the news look like, uh, Northern California is faring a little bit better than, than Southern California. Layoffs are down. Um, one, one question I did have, um, in, on the financial portion of it, um, we said that we don't expect, um, any significant changes in the property tax for this year. And there's still a payment left. It's been deferred. Uh, but given the large number of layoffs that, that are, are being seen and the potential for, um, people not making those payments, isn't there some potential that we might see a significant impact in that, uh, in that tax revenue?
Uh, so, uh, no, the good news is that, uh, the county has said that even though remittance to them will be delayed, uh, they will, uh, remit the, uh, portions that are due to the cities. Uh, and we're on what's called a teeter plan, which is that, uh, if someone, for example, does not pay their, uh, property tax bill, the county still pays us and the county has, uh, the responsibility to go after the collection of that. And so we are made whole. Um, and, and the county, uh, bears the cost, uh, and essentially, uh, has to float, uh, until they can have the, the recovery through whatever mechanism is needed. Uh, and so what's true this year is that we will be made whole based on our assessed role. Uh, as the finance director mentioned, uh, in the long run, and we saw that in, um, uh, all the economic downturns before, there's likely a decrease in assessed value, uh, which has a decrease in tax remittances, thus a decrease in our revenue.
Okay, I understand. And then in terms of, um, of savings and projected savings, was there any consideration given to, um, reduced, uh, utility costs with, uh, certain facilities being, um, closed and, uh, fuel costs with, uh, you know, part of our fleet being idle? Is, was that factored into the analysis?
Absolutely. Finance director is nodding, yes, yes, yes.
Okay. All right, great. Um, and then also I, I definitely support, you know, moving forward on our, uh, transit occupancy tax, uh, that we had been moving toward anyway. I think, uh, when we come out of this, there's going to be a lot of pent up demand. Uh, and it'll probably trickle in, but we want to be well positioned to take advantage of that when, when we do start seeing that recovery. Uh, I wanted to also ask about the short-term rentals, which I know is something else we kind of had in queue. And I was wondering if that's something that we're going to be able to move forward, uh, with, uh, in the next few months.
Well, absolutely. Still in queue, uh, honestly delayed, uh, because staff has, uh, been busy working on, uh, addressing COVID-19 and, and, and other items, but, uh, not loss. Uh, and I don't have a timing for when that will be back before the city council, but, uh, still very much a, um, extending the transient occupancy tax to short-term rentals is something that we, uh, are working on and committed to do.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Linda.
Hi, thank you. Thanks for that, um, that presentation. I just want, have a, have a couple of questions. I can, I don't know if you prefer me to ask and then wait for an answer because they're each different. Um, the first one is, um, the information provided around the homeless is really helpful. I don't think a lot of residents really understand, uh, what's, what the process is because prior to COVID-19, the law had also changed around encampments. And so that legal challenge or obstacle, I should say, mixed with COVID-19, I think is just a kind of unfettered territory. And so my request is if the city can put together an FAQs that we can post on the website and then we can share on our social media sites so that people understand, um, how the city is addressing homelessness and why we are addressing it in this fashion.
Absolutely. Um, uh, we, we will work on that. Um, it's also sort of worth noting that, uh, there's a point in time count that's done every two years. Uh, and so the last point in time count, which is a nightly count of homeless individuals in San Bruno, uh, there were 12 homeless individuals in San Bruno on that night. And while that number fluctuates, uh, it's not really off from what we see on a day-to-day basis and what, uh, Life Moves, our homeless outreach coordinator sees. Um, and so the community should know significant outreach has occurred. Um, I can, I've been to just about every encampment. Um, and I know that our staff and our outreach staff know the individuals in, in, in those encampments. And so while the number does fluctuate, um, we have not seen a marked increase in homelessness. Uh, but what we have seen are some of the encampments, uh, get a little bit worse. Um, and a number of residents that, that are sort of out walking, a ton of people are out walking and they're seeing it, uh, a lot more prevalently. And, and so we are getting those calls and, uh, we'll work on, uh, information to communicate, uh, how we address, um, homelessness. Cause you're right, the public doesn't always know all the work that goes into that.
And, and also that we don't, I mean, these encampments, if it's 12 people and, you know, we say we're working on it and there's a timeframe, then we at least have an idea. But we don't have an idea of how long this COVID-19 shelter in place is going to last. And so they could be there for longer than we would normally expect. So I just want to make sure we have something to point the public to.
Absolutely. And what the public should also know and will communicate is that, um, when, even when there was a removal of an encampment, that doesn't mean that the person accepted the services and left San Bruno. They may very well moved, uh, two blocks away. Uh, and, uh, I think some of the sort of requests that we get, uh, we know that we can't legally do what people are asking. Uh, but people are frustrated and, and we totally get that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and then the next, um, the next question is around the citations. So, um, there, I mean, this issue with parking has been longstanding from, from what I understand of it, even before I was on the council. Um, this is the first week I've, I've received two complaints now for parking, not on the east side. Normally it's the east side that I get complaints about. So it does appear to be, um, I guess, growing, um, just the concern around, you know, people parking illegally. Um, someone recently posted on some of the social media sites, a live, um, walk down San Bruno on a manual wheelchair, which looked painful to be, uh, to say the least, going up and down some of these sidewalks. And so I guess my question is, I, I fully 100% understand that the city wants to be empathetic to people who are home, possibly lost their jobs and, you know, now you have a ticket on your car. I also understand that we don't want to expose our police officers, um, to potential, you know, any exposure to COVID-19. So I'm wondering if we can somehow meet in the middle and maybe, uh, in the meantime, while we're in this COVID-19 emergency, cut the citations in half as far as the cost goes. So go back to starting to cite, um, at half the cost so that we're empathetic to people who may be home, uh, maybe not working. Um, and then, um, I don't see where there would be exposure if a citation is just being placed directly on the car. Based on the daily logs that I'm seeing, there appear to be maybe one to five incidents a day, um, with the, with the, um, the police department. And so I'm just wondering if that is possible. It seems like we are fully staffed. Um, and it might be a good way to just kind of, um, defer any, any more potential risks to people who really are having a hard time getting around these cars.
Sure. Um, I think as we enter this new normal and, uh, may be here for a while, uh, we will certainly, uh, reassess, um, the services that the city provides and what, um, uh, we do vis a vis parking enforcement. You're, you're right. One of the immediate steps we took, uh, to stop issuing parking citations, uh, because, um, while you're right, there are instances where a car is blocking a sidewalk, uh, but by and large, uh, issuing a parking citation, um, is not a essential service uh, to sort of override the risk to public health and the risk to our staff. Uh, and so, um, as we sort of, um, live with this, uh, we, I, I totally get what you're saying and, and, and we'll go back and, and take a look. The other thing I want to say is while we, um, are, we're not fully staffed on our officers, but we are, uh, we, we do have a few vacancies, but our parking enforcement officers, uh, be it our community service officers, there are significant vacancies there, uh, and we are looking into how we retool parking enforcement, uh, on a more holistic basis. Uh, and to, to, we've heard, to have our officers, um, sort of wholesale, uh, start issuing parking tickets, uh, is a challenge. One, because we have a number of officers at home on reserve status. Uh, just, uh, to make sure that if, uh, we have an infection, uh, on the force, uh, we've seen, um, locally, regionally, where, uh, you have dozens and dozens of, uh, people in public safety that go out, uh, due to one potential exposure. Uh, and our law enforcement, uh, like our firefighters, their job requires them to come into close contact, uh, with individuals of the public, uh, and particularly for police, they cannot wear a respirator all day, uh, for all of their interactions. And so, uh, they may very well come in contact with someone that is an asymptomatic carrier, uh, and they know the risk of that. And so we took an immediate action to put a number of them at home, but also take a number of steps to reduce, um, their interaction with the public. Uh, and that is true not only for our city, that's true regionally and statewide. Uh, and that's also true for, um, the type of arrests that are being made, uh, and the type of arrests that are being prosecuted, uh, because the courts are closed. We are in unprecedented times. Uh, but I cannot say that the answer to our parking issues are enforcement and we should bring our officers back and start have them writing tickets. Uh, I think the reality in San Bruno is that the built environment is not sufficient for the amount of cars that people own. And right now we have a lot of people home. And so we do have parking challenges. We do have people parking in front of their driveways. Um, but I don't know that the answer to that is issue everyone citations. Uh, I think we, we, we need to step up our communication around the issues. Um, I think we need to, um, address the issues where sidewalks are blocked, uh, when we can and when we have the resources. But we also have to be extremely cognizant to not put our employees, uh, in danger because if we have a significant portion of our force that go out, we may not have the resources to, to protect this community and we may be relying on the county and other agencies to police this community. And, and we've seen that happen across the country, uh, where there are significant exposures. And we're a small city. And small cities have a unique challenge, uh, given the public health crisis that we're in. Uh, and so there are no easy answers and there are no easy problems. Uh, but I, I certainly, uh, understand, uh, the frustrations, uh, that are out there and, uh, where we are with parking and, uh, we'll continue to work with the police department on, uh, creative ways to address that.
Is, so it's, um, who, the parking citations, um, what are the, the, um, who would normally cite? What is the actual job descrip- what's the classification?
Uh, two people, uh, a police officer or a community service officer.
Okay.
Uh, issued a parking citation.
And the community service officers, can you tell me a little bit more about what they're doing right now?
Uh, sure. Um, so community service officers, uh, uh, do a number of, uh, things. Um, one, uh, they support, uh, deconning of, uh, police vehicles. Uh, so that has been stepped up. Uh, they respond out to all traffic incidents and do traffic control. Um, they help to restock supplies and police cars. Uh, they also help to, uh, support on a normal day, special events, uh, parking enforcement. Uh, they do street sweeping enforcement. Um, they, they sort of have a whole host of duties. Um, in reality, they're sort of a multi-tool that we rely on. I believe we have a total of five people, uh, three of which are part-time, two are full-time. And I think at this point, we only have one or two of the full-time positions full, uh, filled. Uh, but it, but their only duty is not parking enforcement, uh, which is one of the reasons why, uh, the new police chief has, um, a, a task to take a holistic look in how we do parking enforcement and see if there are other ways. And I know at, uh, prior council meetings, um, we've had people talk about, um, other ways that other cities locally are doing parking enforcement. Uh, and we're looking into those. Uh, and I, I agree that sort of changing, uh, how we do parking enforcement is needed. Uh, and parking is a significant issue in San Bruno, um, COVID-19 or not. Um, our challenge is the built environment and, and the number of cars that people own. And, and frankly, with the economics of the region, we often have more people living in the houses that they were built for. And, and we have, um, we, we, we have parking challenges, um, no two ways about it. Uh, and they're greater now that more people are at home.
Okay. And then, um, yeah, and I just don't, I don't want to let, let it completely go. I would, I would still ask, um, that you look at and you explore the possibility of maybe, um, opening up citations again, um, at, you know, half the cost, just so that there is some, some kind, something where people are saying, I have to pay attention, right? Like as opposed to, um, not because what's the repercussion? Um, and then if there's a communication that goes out, allowing people to park in their driveway, um, as opposed to blocking the sidewalk. And, and I, you know, I'm definitely empathetic to our police force. I wouldn't, I would hate for anybody to get sick. Um, I just also want to make sure that we are balancing the needs of residents who live in these pre-World War II homes that are, you know, very, very many of them are tiny. And if you have a wheelchair, you want to get out and get some fresh air. Um, and that we're also being cognizant of their safety as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, the next question I had, just echoing what, um, what council member Salazar said, is I, I also support continuing to move forward with the short-term rentals. So I'll, I'll be waiting for that. Um, and then, uh, my last question is in regards to the testing. Um, I did want to say, I, I made a call, um, actually earlier today. We do have a test center and I'm going to be really cautious of how I, how, I guess this is phrased and you could jump in, uh, city manager, Grogan. Um, but we do have a test center here in San Bruno that's Dignity Health. And, um, this is not, uh, I guess, if I can say a county sanctioned, um, testing center. It's not free, but for members of the public who may be watching this. Um, it is for a, a virtual test where you actually speak with someone and then you go in to actually get, um, tested in your car. Um, it's about $200, $190 to be exact. And if you go in, in person, uh, for a checkup and a check-in, it's about $400. So it is quite pricey. Um, and a list of the insurances that they accept are available on their website. Um, but I do just want to let the public know that this is Dignity Health. It's located right next to Lucky's. Um, and they do do COVID-19 testing. I, I would love to see like all the other council members free testing. I think it's more equitable. Um, but the reality is, is that we have that here. And I think it's worth just mentioning that, um, it is located right next to Lucky's and there is a cost associated unless your insurance covers it.
Absolutely. Uh, the free testing site, uh, for our county, uh, is at the San Mateo County Event Center. Uh, that can be accessed through verily.com, uh, V E R I L Y dot com. There's a series of questions, uh, but that is a free test. And absolutely Verily, uh, through their urgent care in-town center, uh, has a test site. Um, uh, but it is, uh, costly.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, to throw that out. Thank you. And, um, those are all my comments. Thank you, Mayor Medina.
Thanks. Thank you. And then also just to add to the testing site at the fairgrounds, the county has equipped three vans that you can go through the county. They will come and pick you up at your home. They will then bring you to the test site. They will bring you back after you've been tested. This is a service that they're trying to figure out how to step up folks that are, uh, meeting the criteria to be tested. So these are three vans that are equipped and they're sealed so that the folks that are driving it are sealed from the back portion of it. Um, so these are three vans that are available. And now, um, again, we call the county and they will, uh, pick you up, bring you there and then offer that free service. So as, uh, council member, uh, Mason said, it is costly over there, but that county is what is offering that there. And now there is free transportation as well. So I wanted to say that. And on the homeless too, I think we're, you know, there, I had received a call from, uh, um, a very nice lady who's doing some walking and she was saying that she had empathy. So she didn't want to say anything about the homeless per se, but could they, could the garbage be picked up? Could more of that be kept tidy? Um, in talking to the county manager on Monday too, as we know, some of the colleagues that have been on the call, in Burlingame, they do have hotel rooms and they're looking to get more hotel rooms so that they can get those folks that are necessary but sheltered so they, they don't interact in essence, in case somebody is a carrier and unaware of it. But as we all know and we've been talking about, uh, they have to be willing and they have to want to. Um, so it is challenging. Um, when they talked about having some communication, because if you talk about under the 380, that's the state, you call the state, they're not going out. So everybody is kind of taking that same premise, which is through the county and CDC. So, uh, it is challenging and I think people are seeing probably more of it. And then talking to a couple of the mayors, you know, it is more prevalent. So that is a, a concern. And then Marty had brought up about the social distance and, um, he was mentioning about young people. And I, um, saw two gentlemen that I'm going to say are maybe just a little older than I, uh, walking side by side, neighbors, uh, not having the appropriate distance. And I just stopped the car since I knew them and, and let them know. But even at various ages, um, I think some, some of us, uh, folks are not taken into the series as it should be. It's an inconvenience. Um, it doesn't make it easy to do what you want to do. But at the same time, um, what you bring back home could really have a huge effect to, to many people. So I think that's important. I do also want to say to the city manager in regards to the city net I do also want to say to the city manager, in regards to the city net services, I appreciate when you said the candor in bringing that up. You know, everything can be better always. We can improve and moving forward, we, we need to. I think with the challenging times that we're having, it was a very shock, big shock to the community and we're trying to understand as to why would this community staff impose that? I know it had been worked on, what have you, but I think it's important when these roll out, we just need to do a better job. And I think, I wanted to mention too, on Mondays, this is the second Monday I've had where we have region two, which were considered the coastal region within the state. And there are 14 counties that are on the line of the mayors, the managers and the county administrators who actually will update. And again, if you're asking a question, it has to be on a regional basis. It can't be specifically for your community. But in hearing some of the overall statewide information, hearing from some of the other communities, one thing again that I'll always say is it's challenging times. It's not going to get better soon. We will get through it, but to hear from the other counties that they are feeling suffering, trying to balance resources, et cetera. It is still, you know, it's very much through this country, through this community, through this county. And so I appreciate everybody's patience because it has not been easy. I know that you're bringing back, city manager, next month on about the shortfall options on what we're going to do to make sure we balance the budget, which we are required to, we don't have a choice but to by the end of June. Is there anything else, city manager or finance director, you want to discuss or bring up?
No, I just want to thank the city council for all of your leadership and thank the staff. I've been truly amazed at how the staff has rallied together and adjusted what we do and frankly, been willing to put themselves in harm, in harms way. And we're all disaster service workers and so I just want to say from my heart, thank you for everything you guys are doing and will continue to do to protect this community. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else on this topic agenda, let me ask my colleagues, do you need a few minute break or do we want to move into item seven?
I'm good.
I'd like to see us move forward.
Marty, I got a nod from Marty.
See a nod from Marty?
Sure.
Forward.
Yes. Forward.
Thank you.